Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plan, design, review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final actions at the third council meeting of this month or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a zoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use, amendments or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at Carnegie Town Hall on our televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being telecast on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 10:00 AM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening. Welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I call to order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. Our first order of business this evening will be approval of our consent and regular agenda, and we will start with the consent agenda. Denise, if you'd be good enough to read the items?
Yes, sir. Item one, approval of the June 5, 2013 minutes of regular meeting. Item two, flats. Item three, 2013-05-10 rezone RS2 residential district to the Wings Plan Development District to allow an indoor gymnastics facility located at the northwest corner of East 69th Street and South Bonson Avenue. Item four, 2013-05-25 rezoned C2 general commercial to C3 central business district for allowed uses located at the northeast corner of West 11th Street and South Minnesota Item five, 2013-06-07 rezone S institutional district to Lundstrom's Plan Development District for allowed uses located at 3408 West Ralph Rogers Road. Item six, 2013-06-01 conditional use permit to expand a non-conforming residential use in the C2 district of 224 South Waltz Avenue. Item seven, 2013-06-02 conditional use permit in C2 district to construct a commercial retail building on a lot greater than one acre in size at 401 South Boss Avenue. Item eight, 2013-06-03 conditional use permit in C2 district to allow on-sale alcohol located at southeast corner of Bonson Avenue and East 10th Street. Item nine, 2013-06-04 conditional use permit in the RS2 residential district to allow an adult daycare at 1103 Southwest Avenue. Item 10, 2013-06-05 special use permit in SubArea A of the Railroad Center Plan Development District to allow on-off sale alcohol on-site at 401 East 8th Street. Item 11, 2013-06-10 design review in the 49th Street Corridor Design Review District to repair an existing building located at 3400 West 49th Street. Item 12, 2013-05-40 minor amendment to a final development plan in SubArea B Merlin Roy's addition Plan Development District for an office addition to an existing building. Item 13, 2013-06-11 final development plan in SubArea A of Valley Oaks Plan Development District located at 5301 East Clubview Drive.
Thank you, Denise. Staff, would there be any addition or changes to the consent agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've received a request from the applicant for item 13 to defer their application to August.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience here this evening that would have any objection to anything read on the consent agenda item for tonight's meeting? Seeing none, I would ask Commission members if there is anything on the consent agenda item that we would like changed or moved. Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to move item 13 to the August meeting.
Have a motion to move item 13 to the August meeting. Would there be a second to that? Any discussion? Seeing none, we will first vote on the amendment to the main motion. All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? That motion passes. Now we're back to the main motion. Any discussion in regards to the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Ladies and gentlemen, if you were here for the consent agenda item, you're free to leave it this time. Wow. It's just going to be us left, guys. We will now, is there a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Some of them.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed? The regular agenda is approved. Denise, what is the first item on the regular agenda?
Item 14, 2013-06-12 is a conditional use permit in C2 district to allow motor vehicle display and sales located at the southeast corner of West 18th Street and South Spring Avenue.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall with the planning staff, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. The project name is Schulte Subaru Storage Lot. It's actually a conditional use permit. The request is to approve a plan to occupy an existing property as a motor vehicle storage and display lot. The current owner is the First National Bank of Sioux Falls. Mike Schulte and Terry Schulte are the Subaru, are the applicants. Generally located 18th and Minnesota, excuse me, between Minnesota and Spring on 18th Street. The area is about half an acre. It's currently vacant. It was previously occupied by the building and parking lot, which had been removed. It's appropriately zoned for the use, and we have an application that includes a site plan submitted by the applicant. For abutting zoning and land uses to the north at C2 Commercial, as well as to the south and east, and we have compatibility ratings of five for those adjacencies to the west, RA2 residential and a multifamily use and a compatibility rating of three. With that rating, it's potential incompatibility, and we are concerned about potential conflicts with existing uses which are residential. They can be remedied or minimized through project design, and we'll be looking for that in the application. The site is located such that it has access to 18th Street. Now, the applicant is proposing to close off that access and use only the access onto Spring. That makes better use of the property. It also cuts down on public access, which the engineers had kind of looked at anyway as being too close to the intersection with Minnesota Avenue. There are no substantial landscaping improvements to be preserved on the property, and staff will be looking for additional landscaping improvements to mitigate the use. Setbacks and dimensions are required for the property according to minimum zoning standards, and we do not have a plan that meets those requirements, so the application is considered to be incomplete from that standpoint. Just to note what the landscaping requirements would be in order for them to obtain a construction permit for the parking lot and an occupancy permit for the new use. New landscaping on-site would include a front yard landscape setback of 10 feet for the proposed motor vehicle display and sales along 18th Street and along South Spring Avenue. A minimum of one tree per 50 feet of street frontage shall be planted in the required front yard setback. A fence, wall, berm, or shrubbery four foot high in height and of a character necessary for adequate screening of a parking lot from adjacent residentially used property along South Spring Avenue shall also be provided. The applicant is not proposing any new lighting of this lot, and there is a dumpster enclosure at the corner of the lot you see on the slide above, which is located in the front yard, and that will have to be removed from the front yard and setback outside of the front yard setback. Agency review comments coming from engineering include a requirement for grading and drainage plans, erosion and sediment control, and standard requirements. They also would like to see a dimension striping plan that shows the driving surfaces and where the cars are going to be parked. Since it will be a display lot, we can expect customers to drive in and out of that particular lot. Access onto 18th Street, I referenced that it was not going to be used, and the engineering office also needs to perform a significant redevelopment evaluation to determine if a post-construction BMP is going to be required for these additional impervious areas. It could be a trade-off between the landscaping and setbacks and the additional paving that would take care of that. So under the conditional use requirements of the current zoning ordinance, we need a plan that's designed in a manner that encourages display towards the interior of the lot rather than towards the right-of-way for the majority of the inventory, and the petitioner should take particular care in providing landscaping around the lot and throughout the interior of the display area to minimize heat, dust, pollution, and glare. We have received a note from the applicant. It's included in your addendum packet that states they will conform or comply with the minimum standards of the landscaping ordinance setbacks and so on screening. Because the application that was submitted is not complete, staff is recommending deferral of the conditional use permit until the applicant has time to prepare a better plan and include the property lines, dimensions, proposed parking lot construction area, or areas proposed for paving overlay, required front yard setbacks, landscaping and parking lot screening, and dumpster location and enclosure outside of the front yard setback. That concludes staff report, but I'd like to take this opportunity to state that this is for the benefit of the audience at home and also people that are here in attendance tonight. This is a conditional use permit, and conditional use permits are permitted within the existing zoning classification that we're looking at, subject to conditions of approval. All conditional use permits must meet minimum zoning and building codes. Conditional use approvals or denials are resolutions and are final unless appealed to the City Council, and the Planning Commission will now take action on their consideration.
Steve, thank you for a good report. Would anyone here have any questions for Steve regarding item number 14? Seeing none, is the petitioner here? If you'd be good enough to identify yourself.
My name is Jeremy Griffith. General Manager Subaru Sioux Falls.
Jeremy, anything you could add to Steve's report there?
No, he did a good job. He's been in contact with Mike Schulte. Mike said we would do the minimum requirements, so that would be the fence, the trees, the greenway, to improve the looks of the property and make it usable for us as well, so.
Jeremy, I think, did you hear staff recommend a deferral on this particular item because was there some miscommunication between staff and your?
A little bit. I think the true site plan wasn't drawn properly, or the site plan we, that Mike provided. So that, then he contacted, I believe, Steve and just said we would conform to the minimum standards and then provide a site plan before we get construction approval, if that makes sense.
Jeremy, what's your timeframe? I guess if we were to defer this, it would be for another month.
Of course, we'd like to get started as soon as possible. Yeah, I could have a, the site plan, I would guess, within the next week to 10 days, and then if it's a deferral, if we can do it for August.
Well, I'm just asking. We'll see what everybody else says. Anyway, any other questions for Jeremy? Good job, Jeremy.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 14? Seeing none, Chair would entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval for discussion purposes.
We have a motion. Would there be a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, just understanding that the applicant has stated that he will fulfill the four conditions that are listed here. I feel that we should move for approval of this with the four conditions in place.
Denise, Nick, how do you guys feel about that?
That's why it's interesting. Seems like every other applicant would have to put together the site plan and has to do that in the timely and orderly fashion. Seems kind of like these guys should have done that, too.
I kind of agree with you, Nick, Counselor. I seconded the motion, but perhaps on advice of staff, we should rethink that. I withdraw my second.
Well, I think, I think what we'll do is vote on the motion that's been seconded. I think if you're in favor of going forward, the vote would be, let me think, if you're not in favor, the vote would be...
We could vote the motion down, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, forget about the withdrawal.
Question, if we vote it down, isn't he, maybe staff can help answer that? Doesn't he have to wait six months before he can come back and do it again? So I'm not sure we want to do that.
That's right.
Yeah, the motion, if you don't want the applicant to wait for six months for the next application, the motion would have to be for a deferral, and then if it, if it, I mean, the motion is to approve right now, and if it's denied, then they would have to wait six months. If the motion is for deferral, then they could come back in the August meeting, and I think the applicant has stated that, Denise.
If I may, you could make a substitute motion for the deferral, which would trump the original motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a substitute motion for deferral.
Do we have a motion?
That motion I will second.
We have a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just still feel like the applicant has recognized the conditions that are here and will fulfill those. He can't move forward until those are, those conditions are all finalized, so I just feel like it should be approved.
Any other discussion?
Commissioner Anderson, I'm going to disagree. I think that, I mean, the rules are there, and he knew about the rules and could have followed the rules, and it's a 30-day deferral. I don't think it's that big of a deal, in my opinion, and the applicant has said he's okay with that.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the substitute motion will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed?
No.
You're supposed to say yes. No, that's fine. Motion passes two to one. Now that would bring us back, would it not, Denise, to the main motion? No?
No, sir.
All right, so that's...
Yes, sir. It's all, it's all done and all set to move on to item 15.
Thank you, Denise.
Which is a 2013-06-06 Final Development Plan in SubArea A of the Platinum Valley Plan Development District to construct a full-service restaurant at 6401 South Louise Avenue.
The project, Commissioners, I am Kevin Hookman, City Planning Department. The project name for this is Quaker Steak and Lube. It is a request for a final development plan in SubArea A of the Platinum Valley Plan Development District to construct a full-service restaurant to be located at 6401 South Louise Avenue at a site about 2.09 acres in size. The Platinum Valley Plan Development District was zoned in January 1997 to allow for development of commercial, office, multifamily, and single-family residential uses. The SubArea A allows those permitted special and conditional uses of the C4 planned commercial zoning district, including a full-service restaurant. Other final development plans that have been approved in this subarea include Lewis Shrugg, Sanford Clinic, and a full-service restaurant. To describe the site, the site plan has shown, shows shared access to the adjacent property to the south on South Louise Avenue. The required setbacks for SubArea A are 15 feet in the front yard, zero feet in the side, and the rear yard setbacks. The site plan indicates 173 parking spaces, which exceeds the 143 required spaces. A drive-up service window is located in the rear of the building, which requires stacking spaces for vehicles. The shape of the lot is rectangular, and the building is located in the center of the west half of the property, with parking adjacent on the north, east, and south of the building. The elevations provided indicate bright contrasting colors of green and yellow and patterns of stripes and checkers. The use of neon lights is abundant on the roofline and of the proposed signage. Large glass windows appear to mimic garage doors. It is the staff's opinion that the proposed architecture does not conform to the existing buildings within the subarea of the surrounding development. These existing buildings are predominantly use dark and earth tone colors and modern architecture styles. The landscape plan indicates 30 shade trees and ornamental trees that generally meet landscape requirements. On the pedestrian contact connection is provided and runs east from the front door of the building to the center of the existing sidewalk along South Louise Avenue. The connection crosses a parking lot and is separated from the parking by using painted markings on the asphalt. Staff feels that improvements of this connection could be made by moving the required parking lot islands along the pedestrian connection and by creating a sidewalk that is made of concrete and is separated from the parking lot by a curb. There are more parking spots proposed than is required, and this provides the opportunity to make the suggested improvements even if parking spaces are removed. The allowed square footage of signage in SubArea A is the same as C4 district. For this site, 268.5 square feet of wall signs and 152 square feet of freestanding sides with a maximum height of 23 feet are allowed. The plans that were submitted appear to exceed allowable square footage of signs. The SubArea A was intended to be planned, if SubArea A was intended to be planned development area and buildings were to be compatible, the public hearing format needs to be addressed compatibility standards between the Commission, applicant, and adjacent stakeholders. The zoning of SubArea A conforms to the C4 commercial district uses. The land use of full-service restaurant at this location is allowed in the C4 commercial district and is compatible with surrounding uses. Because the subject application for final development plan is consistent with planned development and subarea regulations, staff recommends approval of the request with the following stipulations. Signs to be in conformance with zoning ordinance and approved by Planning Director or Representative. Stacking spaces on-site per required by ordinance. Architectural features of the building adjusted by Planning Commission to be compatible with adjacent buildings. And pedestrian connections to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Director or In summary, this is a final development plan in a planned development district. The final development plans are used in which are allowed, are uses which are allowed in the approved planned development. All final development plans must meet zoning and building codes, final development plan approvals or denials, are resolutions, and are final. The Planning Commission action is...
Kevin, thank you. For everybody watching, hang on just a second, Kevin. Kevin is an intern with the Planning Department this summer. You're still in college?
I am a master's degree student at SDSU for Geography, so...
Very good. How long will you still be? When will you be going back to school, Kevin?
The internship ends in the beginning of August, and I will be going back to school at the end.
Will we see you at next month's meeting, or is this it?
I think this will be it.
Good luck to you and good job tonight. Any questions for Kevin?
Just good luck.
Seeing none, is the petitioner here?
Hello, Commission. I'm Brad Stevens. I'm the Director of Development for High Peaks Hospitality, who is building the restaurant. Kevin pretty much summed up everything in his report. I did bring with a couple of drawings of other buildings, but we have the conceptual on the screen, so I don't know if that's necessary. Does anybody have any questions for me about the project?
Would anyone have some questions for Brad?
Mr. Chair, and you're comfortable with the stipulations and recommendations that the Commission is saying?
We are. We are prepared to conform to all the city's regulations and meet the requirements.
We're excited to have you in there.
Just a quick question. Is there another one of these stores in the Rapid City area?
Yes, we just built one in Rapid City. It opened April 24th. Before that, we opened one in Fargo North. Before that, we opened one in Fargo, North Dakota. It opened December 12th.
My daughter went to it and said it was great, so...
Well, great, we appreciate that.
Any other questions for Brad? Thank you, Brad. Is there anyone else here this evening that would like to address item number 15? Seeing no one, Chair would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with the four stipulations as read.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Seems like an exciting project.
It does. All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're getting done way, way too soon, guys. It's only 6:30. We're not done, are we?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll second. You be quiet.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor will signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? We stand in adjournment.